Hi, Janice. Can anybody hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you.
A healthy dinner of Pop-Tarts for me. How about you, Julia?
Well, Dean, I had the Hominy Fried in Butter. So, yeah, very healthy.
Yeah, but sounds tasty.
Yeah, it is. It was one of my daughter's favorites when she was little. And she used to say, Mom, can you make some of that fat corn? But she always called it fat corn.
Well, if it's fried in butter, it's going to be good to begin with, right?
Right. Yeah, you can't go wrong when it's real butter.
No, I was in Safeway today and saw Pop-Tarts and hadn't had any while. It sounded good. So here I am.
Dean, I always have trouble finding the ones that aren't frosted.
Well, I happen to like the ones that are frosted, so it's not really that big a deal. And I can't remember the last time I bought Pop-Tarts, so.
I like the blueberry unfrosted.
Frosted as they could possibly get. If I could have added some, I probably would.
Go down the cake aisle and get your thing of frosting and just put them on top.
Yeah, that frosting melts in the toaster.
No, put it on after.
Wow, you always have a solution, don't you? It gets runny then too, though. Then my fingers would be all sticky. And then Elizabeth would get mad at me for messing up the city computer.
Just wash it. Throw the dishwasher. Be fine. Yeah, my family's bad at all.
And say, didn't they use to make police patrol laptops that were about strong enough to run through the dishwasher?
I think so. My family's dad, we got a Cinnabon, and I get four or five of the extra frostings, and I take frosting, even more frosting on top of the Cinnabon.
If some sugar is good, more is better.
I'm just as bad, though. I take mine in the microwave with butter on top. Let it melt into it.
Oh, yeah. Julie, I can see you talking, but I can't hear anything you say. I think you're muted.
She has her headphones down, so she probably can't hear what we're saying.
Ah, okay.
You're muted, so if you're talking to us, we can't hear you.
Can you hear us now?
Can you hear me?
I can.
Awesome. What food did you have for dinner?
What am I eating for dinner? Raspberry frosted Pop-Tart.
I like those. I'm, however, having almond chicken from China Walk.
Yeah, you're probably much healthier than I am tonight.
I don't know. Oh, your rice, too. Hey, how about that baby girl? Miss, Miss Jackie had her baby over the weekend.
Did she really?
Yeah, there was some pictures somewhere.
If you, yeah, if you check your city council email, there's pictures of her little girl. She worked Thursday until 5:15 and then had her at 3:11 in the morning on Friday.
Oh, word. Oh, my word.
And I think the mayor wants to get started with the meeting, so we'll.
Okay.
Yeah, we, the time is now 6:30, so we'll just call as being to order. This meeting has been livestreamed using Zoom. Please allow one person to speak at a time. I will call every member to make sure you have had an opportunity to ask any questions. And today is going to be our workshop for Monday, October 4. And if you could have our deputy city clerk, Ranhel, to start the roll call, please.
Mayor Guerrero?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Borisma?
I'm here.
Counselor Farmer?
Here.
Counselor Beeler? Counselor Beeler? Counselor Ristucci?
They can't see because my camera's over here.
Counselor Ristucci?
He requested excuse's absence, so I'll ask for that in a second. Mr. Ranhel.
Okay. Counselor Hicks?
Here.
Counselor Hart?
Here.
Interim City Manager Alba?
Here.
City Clerk Renteria?
She's excused.
Interim Finance and Admin Services Director Hornet?
Here.
Fire Chief Anderson?
I'm here.
Police Chief Escalera?
I'm here.
Public Works Director Fisher?
Here.
Deputy City Clerk Rengao, here.
And we just call one more time for Counselor Beeter, see if he, I do see him logged in, so he might have stepped away from his computer.
Okay. Counselor Beeler?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
Okay, so we do have a quorum. Counselor Ristucci requesting excuse's absence from today's proceedings. He is dealing with a family death, and he won't be able to attend today's meeting. So without objection, I'd like to excuse Counselor Ristucci from today's meeting. You know objection, so ordered Counselor Ristucci's excuse from today's workshop meeting. Move on to our active agenda, which is going to be the 2022 budget workshop. Madam City Manager.
Okay, thank you for attending tonight. We are going to have a high-level kind of budget opener with real numbers, not a ton of them, but at least to kind of give you an idea where we're at and what's going on. So I am going to start with right here. Let me move some things around on my screen really quick. And there we go. Okay, so the purpose of this workshop is to remind everybody of our vision statement. The city of Sunnyside is a vibrant, safe, and clean city that offers great business, employment, recreational, and lifestyle opportunities to its diverse population. So really, with that vision statement, that's where we took off and tried to build the kind of budget that meets this vision. So I'm going to regress just a tiny bit to something for 2021. So these are 2021 ARPA requests. The very first one, it was funding approved for the Utility Billing Assistance Program, and we have started getting applications in. As with anything new, the applications tend to bring up more questions than answers. Let me just, let me just mute some really quick so that we don't get feedback. There we go. So we've, with that program, we've had a business owner that has a tenant that's behind, and then as a landlord, they want to apply for the business portion. So we've had a number of things that have come up, and really, we've erred on the side of, we want to be able to support and help our citizens. And if that landlord wants to apply for it as the business owner, he'll get it one time. And then if the tenant wants to apply, they'll get it one time. But it's kind of one of those things where we know that there are people out there with very large bills that are owing, and we really want to be able to help people. So, so this is starting, but I would encourage everybody to get the word out on this program. If you know anyone that has been really impacted financially from COVID-19 by losing their job or their income being reduced, please let us know, and we can, you know, send out an application. Our next item is new. Whoops, sorry. Go back. Of course, everything gets all balled up when you're trying to do it remotely, right? So next item is called the Nova Time Time Clock Solution, and we'll have a presentation as soon as I'm done with this slide by Jamison. And we're going to request counsel to do a one-time commitment of $40,000 for time clock solution, and then ongoing support with COVID money through the end of the COVID cycle that we can actually use. So it would be a commitment of about $40,000 a year. And then with that, we would try to find funding within our budget so that we can carry forward with this year after year. We also believe that we can do our senior center flooring on ARPA. We're still researching, but we are going to get estimates and have those ready so we know how much. And then we all know that the museum structural repairs is a high priority. Their roof has been bad for at least six years that we know of, because we last had estimates in 2016. Because the museum is a tourism attraction and does invite guests from outside the city of Sunnyside, I believe we can use ARPA money for that, and I think it's a well-purposed use. So again, we're getting estimates. We have to have a new structural engineer come in to give us basically a whole new plan. And while we're having the roof looked at, we're going to have everything looked at so that we know that that building is going to stand up with a new roof, because we sure wouldn't want to put a new roof that does not get supported by the load. So that is basically our 2021 coming up recommendations. And now I'm going to pass it over to Jamie so that she can walk you guys through what Nova Time is and really why we need it for our city. So with that, Jamie, I'll let you start the screen share.
Good. Sounds good. Just one moment. Let me get my screen here. Okay, I think you probably can see my PowerPoint here, correct?
Yes, we can see it. It's not huge, but we.
I'm gonna try to make it bigger. Sorry, just a sec. All right, and how about now? Better?
Yeah, that's much better.
Okay, so Nova Time, our quote is from Andrew's Technology. What this is, is a in that actually has some health screening, temperature-taking functions, as well as offering touchless and mobile timing in and out options for staff. So the basic, the reason we think that this will qualify for ARPA is because it will support us being able to, if we want to, if we choose to, and if employees elect to, provide temperature screening when employees come to work. Additionally, it allows employees to voice login to interact with all essential clock functions with voice command. It's completely touch-free, and it recognizes and identifies employees even while they're wearing PPE. So it uses facial recognition and voice recognition. So basically, would eliminate contact of shared devices for our staff. Additionally, like I said, it will offer that temperature reading that will help make sure that if we have an exposure, that if our employees choose not to quarantine, the governor's orders does have provisions for allowing employees to continue to be at work, but they are required to have temperature checks. So we could use this time clock for that, for employees who choose to stay at work instead of having to quarantine. And then it will display the real-time temperature and log it if we want and protect the data. And so that it is all hosted through them in their website, so we don't have HIPAA issues or anything holding on to the data or storing it. And then, let's see. It also, so those are the reasons we think it can qualify for ARPA, and that we feel comfortable using it for our ARPA things. But in addition to that, it does actually have some awesome features that we think would be very helpful to us. Some of those allow supervisors to create schedules within the system and to allow qualified employees to request shift swaps without having to go through an extra step. It would provide real-time access to their accrual reports. You can set up multiple levels of access for different work groups. So, for instance, we could set up so that our our fire department or a police department could clock in once they reach city limits and versus our public works who may need to clock in at the shop. And we can have people who can message and call in sick right from the app and have interaction with their supervisor and request replacement staff. The supervisor could request replacement staff for qualified employees directly from the app. It is integrated, it does have integration with Springbrook, and it is supported by Verizon, which are two current services, service providers. So we think that it's a pretty good solution for us, and it allows a lot of flexibility, and I think it will really save a lot of time and errors in timekeeping. As Elizabeth said, the first year costs are about $32,000, but the recurring cost for that on an annual basis is actually only about between 21 and 22, depending on how many time clock terminals that we get that have the functionality of the temperature checks. So right now, we're estimating seven, which would be all seven locations where we have employees show up to work. And so if you look at that cost, if you can see the bottom line there, that annual cost really breaks down to $12 per employee per month. So it looks like a big number, but realistically, the amount of time our staff spends going through time cards, filling out time cards, having them approved, I think it will be right within that same, that same realm. So if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. Elizabeth and I had looked at trying to implement this in 2021. However, if you are not comfortable with that, then we would also like to include it in the 2022 budget as a first-time cost.
Okay, counsel, we'll go down our list and see if you got any questions or comments on this presentation for Noah Time, and we'll start with Deputy Mayor Borisma.
Yeah, okay. I keep pushing the wrong button, and so I disappeared instead of I was able to talk. Apologize for that. So it seems like this product offers a lot of features that we like as far as employees being able to take care of a lot of stuff just using the app, which I really like. And I guess my initial question, you answered already, because we're going to have them in all seven locations, which I think is a good idea. At first, I had this vision that it was going to be at one central location, and that all employees had to check in there, which would seem like a bit of a bottleneck every single day, both coming in and leaving unless they were able to do that. Everybody was able to do that on the phone. But I, I think at this point, it looks like a good, a good setup to me. I guess there's a part of me that gets a little bit nervous having that much vision on me, so many eyes on me that, okay, I'm here, I can check in here, you know, my temperature was, you know what it was yesterday. But at the same time, I think in light of the situation that we're in in the last couple of years, I think it's probably a really good idea. So.
And in that same vein, there, there is the contact tracing aspect of this is also helpful. If somebody were to come back with COVID positive, we can see all the employees that worked in the same area as them. So it, yes, I can see how it feels a little invasive, but.
Counselor Beeler?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. What about working from home if they have to do it from home? Is there a way to clock in and clock out?
Yes, so, so all the different employee groups will have, be able to independently set up the time clock options sort of that match up with their union contract and their, you know, type of work that they do. So like I said, you know, police officers that have, may show up overnight for an emergency on a non-scheduled shift or something, the dispatchers would even be able to log them in once they hit city limits versus, you know, somebody who works in the office and elected to work home, from home for the day, would be able to do it from their computer to clock in and out.
Okay, what about the supervisors of employees? Are they going to be able to look at their particular employees? And then will they also be able to look at the, the temperature sensors for that employees, or is that going to somebody else because of HIPAA?
I, I believe that the information that the supervisors get is a simple pass fail. So either their temperature is above the 100s, I think it's 100.4, that the state says is allowable or below.
And then is it, oh, go ahead.
Oh, as far as supervisors, you know, seeing their staff, yes, the supervisors will have access to their particular work group to see who has logged in and logged out and to be able to approve, approve leave and overtime requests and things like that.
And then the last question is, how does this, is this going to help payroll, you know, managing hours and put the checks ready?
I believe that it will help a lot, because right now, they are, we're doing basically hand, either computer-generated in Excel or handwritten time cards, and they take a substantial amount of time, not only for the employees to fill out, the supervisors to look over and approve, but for our actual payroll, the staff to enter and process. So I do think this will be a huge time saver when it comes to processing. And will probably reduce errors as well. Not that we have that many, but, you know.
Well, you've answered all the questions I need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Counselor Hicks, questions comes on this Noah Time? Counselor Hicks, you are muted at this time? You will come back to Counselor Hicks. Oh.
There you go. I'm back on, sorry.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, I like the idea. Everyone else has already answered all the questions I already had. So, yeah, I'm good with it.
Okay. Counselor Farmer?
I have a couple of questions. What is the process we use now for an employee to clock in? Do they, do they clock in with a time card, and then the time cards are collected and then added up and then sent to the office? Is that how it works?
Yeah, pretty much. I mean, the different departments have different things. So I, maybe the police chief and the fire chief can answer for their specific departments.
Actually, I'm, it, may I interrupt? Um, we don't have any time clocks in any facilities that are a punch-in or a punch-out. We have, at the police department, they use Spillman to, to log in, and so it's recorded in Spillman. But it's a manual process for them to go back and see when somebody actually logged into Spillman. So if I arrive to work at 8:00 AM, there's nobody but myself that's accountable to that 8:00 AM. Same with every person at City Hall. So we do not have any way to know for sure when somebody walked in the door except for visual contact. So that is the only way we punch in or punch out is by looking at someone to make sure they're here.
And in speaking with the supervisors, like in the Public Works Department, I mean, they pretty much said that they know when all their guys are supposed to be there, and if their guys show up, then they know they're there. And if not, then they would go from there.
Counselor Beeler alluded to this a little bit about clocking in and having our temperatures taken and this supervising staff being able to monitor it. Is the supervising staff going to have to go through the same process and have their temperature taken and their time logged in?
So I believe Ms. Alba and I have discussed that the actual requirement to use the temperature function right now will not be in place, because I, we're looking into whether or not it would be a mandatory bargaining issue. So I think for the time being, the only requirement we could have is if somebody knew that they had a contact and wanted to elect not to um, not to quarantine and to be able to come into work. And then, yes, every employee would have to go through the temperature check, but it may not necessarily be part of this time clock function. So typically, um, some of our, some of our staff, any, any of our staff that is hourly paid would have to go through this process, but are exempt salary, non hourly staff would not.
I, I know several people that on the other side of the mountains that have this same process for them and I, I, I think it's a good idea. Um, I, I think it's going to cut down a lot of paperwork. I, I think it's going to cut down on a lot of, I was here or was I here? Uh, situations, uh, I, I, I would be for it, although I would like to see the temperature function brought into it, especially at this particular point in time.
Okay. And I think we'll work on that as quickly as we can. We just don't want to implement something that would go, that would be, you know, not supportable through the unions.
And we also would like to create a policy that addresses it so that there is something that we have in writing before we implement. So we'll probably implement and then make sure we have a policy in place as we implement. So that we make sure it's clear guidance on, on what's expected.
And Counselor Hart?
I like a lot of the functions that you've outlined on, with this particular program. I think it's, as Councilman Farmer said, it would eliminate a lot of paperwork, but also give you a better track of how people are coming to work and, and how they are what their temperatures are. And I love that idea of the tracking of folks with the temperature, you know, whether they become contact. What's the word I'm looking for? Uh, but for the COVID tracing, uh, like that. And I think that I think it's a good program. I think it's being able to have it in all seven of our facilities where people are coming into contact. You don't, we don't know who's all coming into contact with who. But it certainly is, gives us an opportunity to protect both our employees, but then also the public that they come into contact with. That the time clock aspects of it, I think are have some great merit. So I would, I would support this particular program. Thank you.
And I agree. I think this is going to bring us into the, you know, current century and after eliminating all those different forms and time sheets or time cards that the, even the police department have to fill in. And I've seen a few of those when Counselor Strom was doing some auditing of some of those time cards and it was pretty confusing. So I can tell that this is going to be hopefully helpful. And as far as you've seen, Ms. Warner, have you noticed, have you noticed that it's going to work for the police department with a different type of pay? Pays that they'd receive? Will that be an issue at all?
Um, I, from what I, from the, from the, um, I wasn't actually here at the city when they did the demo, but from the the, the products, outlines that I've gone through, it looks like you can program quite a few different rates and different, you know, authorities for different work groups. But I'm not a hundred percent sure how it will work. So maybe Ms. Alba can speak to that because she was here for the demo.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your question, Mayor?
Yes. So I, I think I, I, I work with this program. I work, so I'm thinking, I'm just thinking, realizing that it would work, but you know how the police department have different rates for different times and bonuses for different items that they do? And the pay is different. And the question was, is that going to be able to be fitted to this program based on the contract negotiations we have the police department based on the different pay skills?
So the way I believe this works is this is more about timekeeping than it is calculating the time towards the money that they get paid. So I, I do believe that we can be easily programmed. Um, but we'll make sure that we get.
Oh.
Think we might have lost you, Mr. City Manager. Okay. So we'll see what goes back.
I think what she was going to say is it is more of a timekeeping issue. But I think you can program things like an automatic two hour call out or four hour call out for overtime. Stuff like that. If somebody's coming in outside of their normal schedule, where it would automatically know that it's overtime.
Right. And I, I guess that was, the, the question was going to ask was basically that when they do work time and a half, if it's going to be able to program like, say, like you said, a call out, for example, then that rate is going to be a different dilemma. So I, I was like, I said, we programmed that rate that we know how many hours to multiply the hourly rate for. And then payroll can do their part by having that summary of hours worked.
Yeah. So the, I think the data will come from the time clock and then we'll still go through the same process in payroll where our clerk will verify that all of the rates are getting paid correctly for, um, for each type of work. And then the HR person goes over it again. So I mean, then I go over it again. So there's multiple eyes to make sure everybody is getting paid correctly.
So thi- this would eliminate the actual paper trail of the timekeeping. But the payroll piece will still be, uh, obviously, uh, checked and double checked and triple checked. So, yeah, I mean, I, I work with something similar. We don't do the temperature check or, or the remote piece of it, but the program itself, Noah time, we use at work and it is very handy. I know the back office probably had a whole, a whole lot of work to do to set up properties so it could work. So it worked for us seamlessly at the front end where we just look at our employees and say, okay, yeah, you work these hours and yeah, you clock in and out. Um, yeah, as you work past 40 hours, you get overtime and all that good stuff. So the biggest, I guess the only concern I have about is the ongoing cost. I think we're looking at about 18,000 or so per year. So it's not too crazy high. Um, is that correct then from what I heard?
Believe, um, it's 18, it's, I believe it's about 18,000 and then the additional for however many units you get um, for the actual time blocks to maintain them and keep them updated and all that stuff. So, yeah.
We're looking about 20,000, you think, in a year?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. So it sounds like it's something that's manageable. We can definitely work with. And it sounds like Ms. Alba, our city manager, that we, we work into our budget in the next four years, we could get it through ARPA. And then going forward, obviously, it had to be plugged into our budget and make sure we have enough funding to cover it. But overall, I'm in favor as well. So it sounds like it's something that's going to be definitely worthwhile for the city and save a lot of, uh, energy and hours of, of individuals. You know, going through those manual paper time cards. We lost Ms. Alba, but, uh, we got our questions answered. Welcome back.
I had to switch to internet.
Uh, council members, any additional questions on this Noah time presentation?
And Mr. Mayor, I just have a comment. It seems like, you know, we keep, we're talking about the supervisors and the back office and, and the amount of time and effort that this could save them. It seems to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this could be awful, great convenience to our employees as well as it simplifies logging in and checking in and kind of protects them from any questions. If there's any doubts or anything like that, they can go right back and look. And so they've got a little bit of a safeguard there too. Is that correct?
Yes. And you know, one other thing that I, I did not mention, but it is helpful is when we have things like workman comp injuries or something like that. Um, it can collect the data real time. So when somebody reports an injury, you know, you can log, log when it happened and that it happened while they were on the clock. So.
Excellent. I like this. I'm, I'm kind of impressed by what they're able to do. And I, I think this, this is something that we should move forward.
Excellent.
All right. So, um, Mr. City Manager, anything else on the 2022 budget workshop agenda item?
Oh yeah, I still have more things to share with you. So I, uh, let's see. It says host disabled participant screen sharing. So maybe Janice could give that back to me. Probably I, I ran away and when I came back, I didn't know who I was anymore. My, my internet quit on one of my connections. So I had to go to my second one. Okay. There we go. Presentation. Here. Okay. So we went over these requests. Um, I'm going to head to the next one. So this is the infamous now, red dot, green dot. And so I wanted to bring these back. Um, we had a kind of an update to this. And so I wanted to talk to you about kind of where we're going and start kind of either weeding out or, or moving forward with things. So we had multiple all green dots. So more than one person increased the balance of contingency fund. I think that is something that we should be doing, even if it's just 5,000, $10,000, just something to get it starting in the right direction. Um, economic development program, that's something that um, we've talked about, um, something that I think is something we need to get going. Um, and then pay off early the inter fund loan that the general fund owes to the sewer fund. So those are all things that we can do, um, probably this year, excluding maybe the economic development program. That's one that I want to make sure that we are really, really knowing what we need and why we need it. And if it, is it a person? Is it a program? What, what is it? So that one I'll be working with. Really honestly, I believe the port and some local businesses. Um, I'm trying to work with a few of our local businesses to see if we can get a chamber of commerce started again. And maybe we help a chamber of commerce and have them help with an economic development plan. So I think the, the first thing is, is to get the goal, have, you know, get our strategy, figure out who's our partners and then move forward with that one. One green dot was the airport development strategy and that one actually we funded in the last budget amendment. So I'd like to be able to take that one off. Um, and then we have one green dot, add one fire EMS position, one FTE. Um, we have changed that just a tiny bit where um, we think that creating the assistant fire chief and leaving the battalion chief empty is actually a bigger priority for the department so that they have sorry, so that they have one assistant chief that's over the fireside and one that's over the medical services. So we would have um, the battalion chief position left empty and we would only be creating one FTE. So three green dots and two red dots, uh, street crime sergeant. And that would be converting an existing patrol position. And then two green dots and one dread, red dot IT system and equipment replacement and video for council meetings. In my opinion, the video for council meetings, we already really have with Zoom. I think we just need to um, figure out how to get it in the council chambers and having it at each location in front. So that I think is just a matter of logistics. And it's, the prices have come down on everything so much that I think we can get this accomplished without having it to be an enhancement. And then two red dots was the I pro, IA pro blue team software. And then two of them I took off the list completely. And one of them is unemployment self insurance. So we went round and round with the auditors for two years on unemployment self insurance. I did some research and found the RCW that created it for cities. And we are not required to budget for it. We are not required to do anything with it other than have it. And so then I did a help desk request to the state auditor's office. Excuse me. My throat gets dry when I talk too much. Um, the state auditor actually had so many people that disagreed with their recommendations on creating policy and having all of these different funds and all of that, that the feedback was, um, you don't have the authority to tell the cities that they have to create a policy. Um, especially when this was created by RCW. So I took that one off. I do think that in line items that we have um, done a budget amendment in the previous year, we carry that forward to the next year because we know we've had um, unemployment benefits paid out of that budget. And we've been doing that now for probably the past three years. So we know year to year, it has its own line item. We know how much is being expended. And we just keep that up the way it has been. I think that that's the most realistic way to, to do this and not overtax our budget. Um, the second one is the senior center ADA parking ramp. Shane Fisher came up with a solution for the parking ramp and has ordered a, um, a metal, uh, ramp that will be able to put right in front of the front door. And then he will have our crews install it and have the safety bollards put in so that, um, if someone tries to come up to it, they will run into those instead of the steel ramp. So we've already got that, um, in the works and should have it done um, probably before winter. So um, the other things, just like to get some feedback on what should stay on this list and what shouldn't. And I can go to the first page, the, the last page. Sure. And if you would like to discuss.
Okay, we'll start with Counselor Beeler. Any comments on this page of the enhancement request?
Not right at this time.
Okay, Counselor Hitz?
No questions.
Counselor Farmer?
Excuse me. Uh, one comment that I have is the street crime sergeant. I think this, this is something that we need to stay on top of. Uh, we just have to look at the communities around us to see what's happening. Uh, I, I think this, uh, deserves a, a, a strong second look. Other than that, I'm pretty much okay with the rest of it.
Counselor Hart?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Looking at the, the first page, I'm fully in favor of the multiple green dots. I think we did keep those on. Take care of those things. I think the economic development program, I think we're going to be finally on a way to get that situated by finding those leaders in our community, take on that chamber of commerce aspect and develop it into uh, the economic development program that we want. And I think that's, 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 we're on the right track. We've already taken care of the airport development strategy. Is that correct? Yeah.
And that's correct.
Yeah. So that was adding the, uh, you're talking about with the fire and EMS is just having are we talking about hiring two people, one to handle the fire and one to be the EMS position? Is that what we're saying?
No, we would hire one person and leave the battalion chief position empty.
Okay.
So it would still be authorized, but it wouldn't be funded. And then we would have two positions and one of them would be for fire and one of them would be medical services officer.
Okay.
So we're, we're hiring one, but creating two positions.
Okay.
And leaving an existing one blank.
Okay. Okay. So basically, in a sense, then it's two people and a third as needed.
No, the third we wouldn't find.
Okay.
We would just leave it empty.
Just leave it empty. Okay. I get it. And, um, and is that the same what we're talking about on that next one? The creative assistant fire chief?
Yeah, that's what this is. That's what that is.
So those two are kind of linked.
The, well, and this is adding one fire EMS position. That would be an actual firefighter. So this would be another person. And we haven't added that in this current budget. We added the assistant fire chief.
Right. Okay. So on the street sergeants, um, we still haven't funded that. We have, we have put it out there that we want something done with that, but we haven't funded that. Correct? Am I right on that?
You're right.
Okay. So on the next page, so we're looking for things to eliminate, right?
I'm looking for a direction on, on which way you want to go with some of these. If we want to keep going with them on the budget or if we want to, um, you know, not do it.
I gotta think on that sergeant's one minute. Okay. So it's page two. So I'm okay on the fire, fire, fire positions. I think I understand that what we're doing there. So I'm okay with that. The, uh, I really think the IT system, equipment replacement reserve, we really need to have that established. You did, because we don't know when things are just gonna, like you, you know, have that glitch in your your IT and then boom, you have nothing. So I think we'd need to be re- putting a replacement fund in there. I don't know that. Don't know why we don't have it. We don't need to be, but I think we should have that. I I think even though there's only two red dots there for the software, I think, tell me about what that software was again. I can't quite remember.
It was to track their training and their departmental, I'm trying to think what else it was. It was basically for their, I believe it's for their training.
Is that for a particular department?
It would be, it would only be for the police department. Chief Escalera, are you on? Could you clarify?
I'm sorry, could you go ahead and repeat the question?
What does the IA pro blue team software do for the police department?
What it does is that IA pro is a basically an internal affairs or program, yeah, but it also but it also provides basically like it it provides history on individuals to also try to stop some issues before they actually happen. So it is also a welfare component before something small turns into something large. It's just a very solid accountability unit. We we look at this and we watch this as Yakima PD uses theirs. And several other departments that have IA pro. It is a, it is something that I I think that really merits a very strong look at and consideration, especially based on the times. It was the current legislation, I think it would really strengthen and bolster how we do business there. And and really for accountability at the end of the day. It would help us quite a bit.
Okay. I I've got to move, so I don't have that external noise there, guys. So give me a minute while I get up and move. So basically, the police thing is about it's a software to track your police officers? Is that what it is?
What it does, it can, it can, it can track behavioral issues with police officers. And that's, and it kind of has a, the blue team, red team, you know, it it also merits positive recognition, but it also throws red flags in the event that somebody is, you know, perhaps showing a pattern of too many complaints, citizen complaints for a specific reason. And and we'll just use courtesy as an issue. So if somebody is, you know, having an issue out there on the street, maybe it's the way they're addressing people and they don't realize that how they're doing that. It does kind of give you that that red flag. And so the red flag allows the supervisor to look at that and to address the matter with the employee before it gets to a point where you know, perhaps an investigation is needed or or discipline may have have to be a remedy.
As for the the last two things on there, of course, we're we're getting the the senior parking ramp. And you've already explained that. So I'm, I I think those are fine to take off. I don't know what to take off. I don't know. I think so far the things that that we've kind of got the most green dots on are things that we need to be doing moving forward. I I'd like to come back maybe to the blue team software at some point, but maybe not. But for the rest of them, I think we're in pretty good shape on those. I don't have any issues with the rest of those. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Borzna?
Yes, thank you. So as I'm looking at the first page here, I'm not going to get overly involved with the top one, the multiple all green dots. I'll start at the bottom, street crime sergeant. I think that one really makes a lot of sense, as councillor Farmer said, that we need to just look at surrounding communities and see trends. Chief Escalera has spoken multiple times about the fact that we can expect an uptick in crime. And we have seen that and doing the best that we can to get on top of that, I think is a very wise move. We really do want to protect the citizens in this community. And it protects everyone, really, if we're on top of crime before it happens. Or if we can come to a conclusion on those crimes as quickly as possible after they've happened. I I don't want to see us return to where we were a few years ago with the shootouts on Main Street or on Sixth Street. Now, that just doesn't, it just doesn't work well for me. So I'm, I I think this is a good move. When we get to the multiple green dots, create assistant fire chief. And I think that would make sense, too. I think it's an organizational change that can make the department more efficient and make things work better. And I think that's a good idea. And then we get to the one where it says add one fire EMS position. And I have a question before I go any further than that. When we created the, or we agreed to take on the Grandview EMS services, one of the things that we talked about was adding positions to help staff that. Chief Anderson, I think you're on. Is there, do you know if anybody has been hired since we took over that Grandview ambulance service?
Uh, yes, we've actually hired, uh, we went from the time in twenty eighteen, we had fourteen FTEs, I believe it was, we had one vacancy, we were approved for fifteen. We're up, we have eighteen approved FTEs and lying on the staff schedule. We have eighteen filled positions, we actually have nineteen filled positions right now.
So so we have hired, excuse me, we have hired people to to help fulfill that obligation to Grandview. So thank you for that, chief. Sometimes it seems like these guys are awful, are are awful stressed out and tired when I see them around. And so I guess, you know, we ask an awful lot of our first responders, both police and fire and EMT. I'd like to see that one happen. I really would. Yeah, the other ones, I think it kind of goes along with the dots. You know, where the more green dots are, the more in favor we are of them. So I guess, I guess that's where I'm falling. I mean, I'm yeah, I know adding staff is a is a long term expense, but I think in a couple of instances, it needs to be done. So that's where I am.
Okay, and well, I mean, the whole purpose of having this exercise at the retreat was to avoid having like the conversations about what to approve and deny. So I appreciate you, the summary of what happened that day, obviously, is is today, but for me, the red dots are, obviously, people are against those and they don't feel strong about them. Yes, obviously, the ones that we voted for on green dots, we're going to stand behind, like the ones that are red dots, we're going to stand behind those as well because we don't, didn't feel it was appropriate for us to fund some of those individuals or positions or programs. So the way I feel about them, yeah, if they all green, by all means, let's move forward. If they have red dots, then that's something we could consider down the road. But for the time being, the green dots, which should be the ones that don't have any opposition, should be easy ones to move forward. And the one with the red dots should be basically left for future consideration.
Mr. Mayor, anything else?
No, thank you, mayor and council. This is exactly the direction we needed to go. So now we're going to look at the preliminary preliminary numbers. So our general fund in revenues has sixteen million four hundred and forty-eight, one hundred and ninety thousand. And in twenty twenty-one, we have sixteen million three hundred and twenty, one hundred and ninety-nine. And so that is a an increase of less than one percent. So we're being very conservative on revenues. We want to make sure that we do not overestimate revenues to the point that we are unrealistic in what we expect. I'd be much happier to come back to you in the budget amendment number one or number two and say, you know, look, this one is coming in much higher than we expected. So we need to increase our revenues. It's always much better to increase your revenues throughout the year due to changes in forecasts than to have big sights on revenues that are not going to happen. Total funds would be forty-three million, three hundred and thirty-nine, three hundred and sixty-two dollars. And then you can see versus twenty twenty-one was forty-three million, four hundred and twenty-three, four hundred and two. So again, the decrease is less than one percent. So with that, I will go to the next slide and talk about expenditures. So general fund expenditure is fourteen million, nine hundred and thirty-eight, six seventy-one. And last year it was thirteen million, six ninety-five, four seventy-nine. And the total funds was thirty-eight. It was basically thirty-eight point two million for this year and last year was thirty-four point nine million. So both of those have an increase of about ninety percent. So now I'm going to go over and give you some information about what staff is recommending. So in twenty twenty-two, we, as a group, sat down together and looked at what we really, really need. And so we really need staffing in order to start doing a better job of managing just everything. So when I talked to the fire chief, we discussed whether he needed one more EMS firefighter or if he really needed that assistant fire chief. And the consensus was that for the department to run smooth, am I stuck again?
No, you're good.
Okay, um, for the department to run smooth, he really, if he had to trade one for the other, he would like the assistant fire chief. And that would be more helpful to him. So that's the one that we funded. Same thing with the police chief. He would like to have both the police commander and the the street crimes sergeant. But if you, if you prioritize the work that needs to get done, he really needs that second police commander. So we chose to fund the police commander, even though the street crime sergeant is what council had directed. This is really what the staff at that department needs. They need that second person when, because right now, if if Officer Bailey or Commander Bailey is gone, there is no middle management anywhere in in the police department and we have to pay a sergeant to get, go into that role. And it costs the city a lot of money because they have, they are subject to overtime, they have out of class pay. All of these other items that really end up costing us a lot more in the long run than if we would just go ahead and and hire the police commander. The next item is what we're calling a project manager. This would be for public works and this individual would be under Shane. And basically, that this person would run all of the city projects. We're finding right now that Shane is stretched so thin that sometimes there's projects that need to be done and he just doesn't have time to do them. And I'll I'll give you an example. You authorized in budget amendment number two for us to start looking at card, you know, keyless entry, card locks. And he has, he's reached out to a few vendors and is looking at getting some bids. We, he's talked to the county. But really honestly, he's had, you know, like Midvale Road project that's been on his plate. And that project, he had to make a priority because we had a grant and we had HLA and it was millions of dollars. So the one with the keyless entry kind of gets put off until he has more time. So between all of the stuff that we have going, we think that a project manager would help us with any city project that's going on. So whether it be getting three bids, doing the the publishing in the newspaper of its public works, holding those bid openings, preparing the documents for council and on and on and on. There are so many things that go into trying to get a project implemented. And and I'll be honest with you, like this Nova Time project, we saw this presentation in April and I'm just now getting it to you because it took so long for us to try to figure out how to get things implemented and where we were going to pay for it and how we would present it. So this project manager would take a lot of the little day to day stuff off Shane so he could focus more on the things that he needs to do as a public works director. And then seasonal maintenance worker for public works, that would be someone that we would hire seasonally in the water department. And then we would have added staff for union. So the police department lost their receptionist to several years ago. And we know that there's going to be additional staffing needed due to the record keeping that we're going to have when we start needing body cameras and cameras for the the rooms that they do their interrogations in for their interviews. And so we just see that the need for this, for them to have another person in that capacity. So we would like request a receptionist to put back in place. And then another maintenance worker for public works. We're just finding that we just don't have enough staff to do the work. And then fleet maintenance, as you're aware, we lost our fleet maintenance person. And he was phenomenal and very good at his job, but even he couldn't keep up with the fleet. And so we are asking for another fleet maintenance. So the numbers that I gave you in the last two slides, I will let you know that those positions are all funded in those numbers. So those are in there, they're a part of it. They have, they're already in the preliminary budget as funded. They can be removed and we can see, you know, where they go with that. But this is kind of the the wants and the the asks for the staff. And then added equipment, we have four vehicles in the public works, not funded, but there's capacity. So these would be in the street department, the water department and sewer department. And then four vehicles in the police department, not funded. And I'm not sure where we'll fund them. We may ask you to go with another loan, low interest loan. But we'll see, we're still working on that. A lawnmower, it's a pretty expensive lawnmower. It's not like when, that I would go buy for sure. But that one's not funded, but we think we can find it. A vehicle lift for the public works, not funded, that would come out of the street fund. Two CPR devices, those are funded in this budget of our department. And then a push camera for public works, it's not funded, but there's capacity. And then an effluent flow meter, not funded, but there's capacity. So if council would like to discuss any of these items, I would open it up for discussion, Mayor Greer.
Okay, we'll start with councillor Hicks. We'll come back to councillor Hicks. Councillor Farmer?
I would, at this particular point in time, I would like to see some justification for the added equipment. And I would also like to see what the public works maintenance worker would be tasked with and the seasonal maintenance worker tasked with. And then also the fleet maintenance in the public works, too. I'd like, I'd like to review that position, what you're asking for and what you all need there.
Okay, we can do that.
Councillor Hart?
Around how how Nick, how closely, how tightly we control who we hire and what positions we hire. It seems to me that the recommended staffing is warranted. There's always extra work at the public works as far as for seasonal workers. They always are needing an extra hand for parks, for keeping our parks nice. So I, and and the various things that are involved with that. So I know that that is a real necessity as well as the maintenance worker. They, you know, those things are in the public works, so really what keeps this, keeps the town moving. And so I think I I'm pretty much in favor of those. As far as the added equipment, I think that we should be able to do the equipment as necessary. I mean, I I know that some of there is not funded currently, but maybe we can get it in a a different way, the capacity for some of these other things. I think we should try to move forward with them if there's a possibility. The public works vehicles that vehicle lift and those different things, I think we should really see if there's not some capacity for that. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Borzna?
Yeah, thank you. So first of all, the fact that you were able to fund seven positions, six of them looks like full time and still keep the budget as Six of them looks like full-time and still keep the budget as tight as you possibly could, uh, I'm really impressed. You know, and I look at these positions and I think most of these are positions that we have had before, that have been funded before. But as people have left, they simply were not filled just because of budget concerns. But yeah, now we've been able to find a way to fund that without going over the top with the budget, which. Which was a good move. I think that, that, that almost makes it, um, you know, a, a done deal in my head. But, um, then I get looking at the vehicles, I do have a question, you know, we recently. Um, approved loans for police vehicles and you're saying that these are separate vehicles in addition to those that we approved?
Yes, in order to get our, um, vehicle fleet up to, uh, current year. Um, we need to get on a program of at least four a year until we can maybe knock it down to two. Um, we still have two thousand five police vehicles in service. And, um, our, our police chief actually drives a vehicle that. He could not use in a pursuit because he would end up in the ditch. So we, we really need to, to start looking at. The vehicle replacement program, we have started putting money aside for that. But it's going to take us several years before we'll be able to make purchases out of that. So. We have several things, things that are going on, if we pay off that interfund loan earlier. We could use the payments that are already budgeted to use as replacement vehicle payments. Um, we also have, uh, several, we have a loan coming off next year. In twenty twenty-two that we could use for the twenty twenty-three. So, so there are several things that we could start kind of rolling through. Um, that I think we really start, need to start thinking about the future. And, um, trying to take some of these older vehicles out of service, because two thousand five is, is really, um, you know, unex- unacceptable. For, uh, city vehicles and we have multiple two thousand five vehicles. Um, and the, the four vehicles in the, um, public works. Those would also replace vehicles that are very old, one of them would actually replace something that's from the nineties. So we, we've, we've really kept our fleet. And having a good mechanic helps and having good maintenance helps, but. At some point you have to take those older vehicles out of service.
Well, be a little careful there because my main work vehicle is from the nineties as well, so.
Well, I get it.
But at any rate, um, you know, I have seen the need for new police vehicles, um. I guess. You know, with the vehicles that need to be replaced, I think we kind of need to keep an eye on how things go throughout the year and then the way. We did this year introduce that, you know, sometime throughout the year in a budget amendment. That says, hey, you know, let's, we, we can do it now, now's a good time. Uh, we, in this case, probably want to keep a very close eye on interest rates so that we can maybe get some of these while interest rates are low. But we need to keep a very close eye on our, our budget, make sure that our, that our income is, uh, equivalent to what we want to spend. Um, the positions that are funded, I don't have a problem with them. But we need to be real careful on our purchases. So I'm willing to do it. But I don't, I don't want to drive us in the hole, that's happened before and I don't want to go there. That's all I've got, thanks.
Councilor Beeler.
Yeah, um, the additional staffing I'm comfortable with, I'm like everybody else, um. It seems like we just, all of a sudden, we need four vehicles here, four vehicles there. And somebody looking at us thinking, do we just need four more vehicles? But now I hear you guys are need to swap it out the old ones. We really need to come together with all the vehicles in this city and put them all on a schedule. So we know how long they'll last, be it either age or too many maintenance problems or mileage. And instead of getting, I mean, right here, we want eight more vehicles. Well, we should have been planning this years ago. Um, when I was helping out the, uh, public works in the code enforcement back when it was at the city hall. I was driving the Ranger and the S-ten that were out there and they were old back then, that was fifteen years ago. So I think we need to come up with a way of keeping up with our vehicles we have. Um, the vehicle lift, um, everybody wants a vehicle lift in their shop. I mean, it just makes work. Uh, that much better and you can do more and you can do it faster with the vehicle lift. But there's a lot more to it, there's a safety issue, there's a what size lift, how big of a vehicle are you going to lift? So we really need some more information on that. Uh, somebody wanting a, a lawnmower, well, is this replacing one, is the, the. I know we are now mowing against between exit sixty-three and the city, we're mowing the fields out there, but I see a tractor parked out there. Dedicated just for that process. So I think we just need a lot more information on this before we start deciding to, to put it in the budget. Uh, but as far as this, the, the staff, I think it's, uh, I think. Talking to the people that are actually working out there, getting their response. I think that's a, a good call and we're getting the right information on that. That's all I have.
Okay, Councilor Hicks.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm kind of in agreement with everyone else here, it's, uh, the staff, I have no problem, it's already. Budgeted in, it looks good, it's way under what we thought, what I thought it would be. Uh, vehicles, same way, we should have thought, started thinking years ago. I mean, we did, we've talked about it a few times, but driving older vehicles isn't gonna surprise. And, uh, it's not just, uh, police and city works, it's, uh, all the fire department and everyone else, but. I can go for it, but you know, just as, uh, Council. Boysma said, you need to keep an eye on our budget, we can't do what we did a few years back.
I'm in the opposite group on this, I really feel like, uh, equipment is a one-time expense that we can obviously sustain. Uh, positions, on the other hand, they're gonna be ongoing and this is going to be obviously something that's gonna be out to be. Added to the budget every single year, it's not gonna be just a one-time expense. And just looking at all these positions, I'm, I mean, I'm just estimating probably easily. I don't know, probably four hundred thousand, if not more, uh, benefits and everything, and it might be on the, on the low end. So I'm really surprised to hear that our budget is able to balance without sacrificing. Anything else that we have already prioritized in the past as a council. Um, with these positions. So I'm really looking forward to seeing where we are going to be finding those funds. When last year we were pretty scared that we were not gonna be able to, you know, uh, bounce a budget and, or two years ago and have to eliminate positions. So I really wanna kind of get more details as far as where this money is coming from, where, what's getting cut or from prior years, what is not being funded. To support these positions and obviously ongoing, because ag- again, this is not gonna be just a one-year, two-year or four-year ARPA funding. It's gonna be for the foreseeable future, um. Again, you know, if it's sorely needed, I completely understand, but that doesn't mean that we have to fund it, doesn't mean that we have to budget for it. Um, that's something the council absolutely has the, the purse strings at the end of the day. It's not the, the department heads or, or even Ms. Alba that can pull those strings, that is the responsibility of council. And if council says, nope, we're not gonna find, uh, no equipment or nope, we're gonna find no, no positions. That's the biggest authority responsibility that we have as a council, is the budget and setting policy. Uh, and that is something that really have to take serious as a group. And make sure that we are being aware of where the funding is coming from and making sure that we have enough funding. To sustain this city and not be the same boat we were a few years ago, we were not knowing where payroll was gonna be made or not. So just kind of word of caution to this, I mean, it's great to he, see all these enhancement requests, you know, obviously. We shoot for the sky and hopefully you get to the moon, but at the end of the day, I really feel that we gotta be cautious and. And making sure that the budget makes sense at the end of the day when we, uh, approve some items, uh, going forward. Right, Ms. Alba, um, you got the floor?
Okay, so the last, um, twenty twenty-two enhancer requests is, um, things that we've talked a tiny bit about. But, um, we've talked about the senior center flooring, the museum structural repairs. Um, we need to enclose the gable ends at the pool, um, I'm not sure if everyone's aware, but there are some. Open vented, um, ends of the pool. And so basically all winter, the dust gets in there and makes it really, really dirty, so we would like to get those closed off. Um, South Hill Park sprinkler system is, um, have, has a lot of issues. We know that it's, it fails at some point and so we actually need to get that sprinkler system redone. Um, a bleacher slab at Central Park, we've been trying to do that on the. Um, other side for a very long time, we want to try to at least get that done next year. Um, the ADA lift at the pool, we, um, are having problems with the one that we have, um, and we can't locate. Uh, replacement battery for it, so we may end up having to purchase a new one. Um, the pool slide shade, uh, we've been using a tarp every year that we go down and buy from Ace. And we'd like to actually buy a real pool slide shade, since we've made so many upgrades to our pool, we want it to look nice. Um, the HVAC at the old sewer ops building, this one is one that we are going to include in our, um. The agreement that you guys just let us do with, um. Kind of trying to think what the name is, but basically the facility upgrade where they go through and look at our lighting. Uh, we had it at, uh, the workshop so that you guys could do it, we'll ask for that one to be in there. Um, SCADA and server hardware, software upgrades, um, those are things that are just, need to be in there annually. And then sidewalk replacement program, this we want to fund out of the T, TBD money. Um, we think that, uh, that is really important. Um, we, we know that our sidewalks have been in disrepair for a while. So we want to have an actual sidewalk replacement program, bring it forward and move on that. And then, um, dispatch remodel project. Possibly the Choices Building. Um, we've, we haven't really talked about this very much, but the Choices Building is the building that's at the, um, police department. Kind of in the parking lot, between the parking lot and Tina North Park. So this building was built, um, over ten years ago using CDBG money that was, uh, grant between the city of Sunnyside and this. Um, school district and it was for, um, basically the school to do kind of like gang. Uh, rehabilitation in, at the school. The school has changed their program, uh, they actually renamed it even and have taken it to the high school. And they have indicated to the city that they no longer, um, have a use for it. And in Oc- on October eighteenth, we will have passed the ten years. That that is required use that has to stay with, that was within the grant. So after October eighteenth. The school district could give it to the city, um, or exchange it for something else. Uh, to let the city have that building. So if we would have full use of that building, we would have some remodeling that we would do. And, um, possibly add a training room, but we also, um, have talked to the chief and he'd like to have that be. A, a dispatch area if we can. So that's, that's coming up, but it's not something that we have, you know, basically. Put in the budget or anything, but that's something that we want you to know is kind of on our radar. And we may be bringing forward something, an agreement where the school district lets us have that building. And so with that, I'm, the facility upgrades, I'm just gonna kind of leave off, I'm, I'm sure most of you. Have seen these and, and kind of know what I'm talking about, um, these are things that we will be working into the budget as we can. Um, but a, a lot of them are just little things, um, that we just want you to be aware of, those are things that we. Kind of want to do for our facility. I think the mismatch, uh, dispatch remodel project will really, um, determine if we. Get a negotiated something with the building and I think if we were going to actually move on that, I would. I think it should be a budget amendment where we know where we're gonna do it and have everything. At this point, it's still kind of up in the air whether. We make the trade. So I think that one, we would just wait and see. And so I'm gonna go on to the next slide. And take questions.
Okay, Council, uh, I won't go through all the list, but any questions for this, uh, presentation?
First of all, I'd like to say that, thank you for all the work that went into it, um, the information was interesting, I think. I wouldn't mind seeing numbers added to it, I'm curious to know, for example, how much we intend to pay for public works vehicles or police vehicles, how much the. ADA lift at the pool would be, those types of things, I think having numbers to go with it kind of helped me. Think about, you know, what we're talking about, yeah, all those things would be nice, but. Um, how much is this gonna, how much is this gonna add to the budget, where are these funds gonna come from? So. I guess that's information that would be helpful for me in making decisions, but I do appreciate the thoroughness of the list. Um, and so, and as Mr. Guerrero said on the last point, we'd sure like to see, see how that's all gonna work. So. That's all I would.
Uh, Deputy Mayor, if I may, I, what I wanted to kind of let you know, um, Jamie and I were speaking about this today and. This is the first time in Sunnyside you've been given anything this early at all. Um, usually we don't even know preliminary numbers yet, we're still doing data entry. Um, and so that's why we kind of went real high level with it today because. We just wanted you to start getting in your head and thinking about, oh, okay, this is kind of the direction that the staff is going. And come to the table to make sure that you're okay with our direction and if you're not, to provide us feedback so that we can go back in. And take in or take out what needs to be done. Um, and then the next one, you'll get. Real like reports and numbers and the stuff that you're used to seeing, so at our next budget meeting, you'll get all of that.
Okay, that sounds good, thank you.
Uh, 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 Mr., Mr. Mayor, this, Julia, uh, heart. Um, I think that having that list in front of us helps us to. So we don't forget items that we know needs to be done. Uh, things that, um, have come up in the past two or three years, five years, some of them longer than that. But being able to have a, a list and like at, at their next, uh, meeting. To see the numbers of how much this stuff is going to cost, do whether it's the cars or the lawnmower or, you know, things like that. So I'm, I'm really happy to have a list so I can think about these things. Having the numbers as, as Deputy Mayor, uh, Borisman said is gonna be incredibly useful as well, but I'm, I'm real happy to have a list. And thank you very much for going to that extra effort on that because. I don't want those things to get lost in, in our worries, um, in our, in our discussions. So, thank you.
Anyone else, questions or comments? Okay, I think you guys answered most of our questions throughout the presentation, so we'll move forward.
Our next, uh, budget retreat or budget workshop will be November first. And like I said, when Deputy Mayor asked the question, that's where we'll have, um, reports and you'll all have received a binder. And there will be information in there so that you can start seeing, uh, budget development and, uh, salary schedules and all of that. So. So look forward to that November first, um, and we'll just keep, keep plugging on.
So, Mr. City Manager, this concluded twenty twenty-two budget workshop?
This does.
Okay, so our next agenda item is gonna be the Nova Time ARPA funding.
Actually, we incorporated that into this one, so we don't need to go to that item if you'd like to pass that one over.
Okay, up next then we have our upcoming council meetings.
Okay, at the, um, October eleventh regular medium, we will have the Ad Valorem Taxes Public Hearing. And notices are published on nine twenty-nine and ten-six, and then Title Six Non-Discrimination Agreement. Um, the Nova Time ARPA Funding and the LTAC Recommendation. On November twenty-fifth, we will have the Ad Valorem Ordinance First Reading or Adoption. And then the False Alarm Ordinance Update, this is the one that we talked about, um, with the. Uh, police department and their false alarms. Uh, November first will be, uh, twenty twenty-two preliminary budget to council and then the city safety plan. And then November eighth, the twenty twenty-two preliminary budget first public hearing. And then the rest is all just standard public hearings, um, budget adoption, that kind of thing. So about the same thing we've done.
All right, so I think that's going to be as, but as much as we have in our agenda today, so there being no further business to come before council and without objection. I adjourn this meeting at 7:51 PM. Thank you, Ms. Alba, thank you, Ms. Warner, for getting this presentation put together. And it's very helpful to get all those, uh, ideas out in front of us and some food for thought when we get those numbers and see, uh, to ask more prepared or educated questions about those, uh, those numbers. So thank you for that. It says, all right, good evening.
Have a nice night.
All right, thanks, good night, everyone.
Bye.
Nice job, people.